The June 25th, 2018 meeting of the Purview City Council is not called to order. And it is 6:13 PM.
Council Brian Rowland.
Present.
Council Jonathan Randall.
Here.
Council Kendrick Jones.
Here.
Council Wendy Williams. Council Monte Williams.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
Thank you ma'am. And do we have either a minister or someone who would like to grace us with an invocation this afternoon? Besides Mr. Eazy. Our newest SGA president, would you mind sharing us a brief invocation, just blessing the case? Because I know you got the experience.
We're all bow our heads. God, thank you for this moment. Thank you for letting us be here. Thank you for letting us gather here, the leaders here, this community here, and everyone involved in the community, pray for the community. We appreciate your grace and the way you look over us. Please let us move to go smoothly and to your glory in Jesus' name.
And we'll have the pleasure to lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any comment cards?
Yes. Ms. Williams? Miss Angelo Williams? I've got it. I've got it. Ms. Williams? Okay, let's, uh, please, let's, no talking during the meetings before we start, thank you. Yes ma'am, go ahead.
I'm Angela Williams, Purview is my home. And I've been disturbed about some things for many years that gone on in Purview. Mayor, it was gone on there. I went to UTE University to listen to when they was campaigning. And what disturbed me is listening to the students that was running the mission. They campaigned to the students and not to the citizen of Purview. And that bothered me. The citizen of Purview don't know any of you. God, talk to people in the city. And what your agenda is of coming here to want to be on the councilman as student. You don't pay taxes here, you don't own property here, nothing here, you stay on campus. And that bothered me. And I listened to everyone and I looked at your face and your action. To me, it's something that wasn't true to me. Or why you was running and you being concerned about the citizen in Purview? Because we are the landowners. And we, and make me think that if someone else is working with you all, that's causing you want to run for the citizen. And I think this, something needs to be changed. You either gonna have to live in Purview for five years or 10 years, owns no property, pay taxes, something here. I want to see this change. Because with the students that's coming in and running and they don't even know anything about the citizen in the city. You to come out and campaign with, you to go to no house, nowhere but to the students. Because you know you live in a student will put you in office. And that bothered me. And things has been going on in the city way before now, for twenty-some years. Things that were said to me when the other mayor was here about our property, about the citizen property in Purview. I went to meetings that I wasn't invited to see plans. Over twenty-some years ago for the property of Dan Daniel's, Dan 1098. And it was shocking to me. Because you made plans of what you want to do here in Purview to take the people's property and not talk to us. That hurts me. I don't know about the other citizen here or how you feel, but I know how I feel. I saw plans and I asked them, why you having plans to take our property and put you on the bill? But you haven't discussed anything with none of us. I went to three meetings, they didn't know I was gonna be there. The students are in the impression that the 14 black family bought their property from the university. I said, "No, that's not true." That's the biggest lie I have ever been told. So things have been going on too long, some changes and things, that's bothering me. And I'm hoping that the mayor and I can go do something about it because more than this, me. There's some citizens that don't come here because they're special people. And they see what's going on here. You been here councilman twice. And things that I've been seeing and I saw, things that I was very disturbed about. So I'm hoping that's gonna, if you say that what you want to do for the city, but you're not showing me anything that you want to do and work with these citizens. We pay high taxes, water bill, and things that's going on. It's been some changes now, since Mayor Allen been in. But other, other time, I didn't see no changes. Number 18, I was on committee after number eight, but I wasn't recognized. I was the treasurer. Board of Justice, I was on that committee. I saw a whole lot and I experienced a whole lot. But citizens, we need to wake up. Because I see some things that, that was told to me twenty-some years ago that want to be done in the city of Purview. So we got to change some things up again. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Uh, Ms. Dr. Anderson Carter?
Giving all praises to God, uh, I would like to know, I'm like Angela, there's a lot of stuff that's disturbing, that's been said that's disturbing to me. I would like to know the future of 1098 and slash University Drive. I would like to know all the plans for the next year or two, what you all plan to do. And especially, taking my driveway was really bad, that was dirty. And I had had that driveway for years. And I'm like Angela, we're one of the first 14 families here. We were never, never recognized as being, uh, say that, uh, you're going to make a plantation out of 1098. We didn't know that, they was gonna be digging until we heard woke up and they were digging. And then they came, uh, some people came from A&amp;M and I just get so sick of that. It needs to be Purview City, not Purview A&amp;M. I don't even recognize that. But what I'm trying to say is that the meetings that we went to just can't be continued. We told them, we did not want that stuff down 1098. All the meetings that we went on the council, we said, "No." But it came anyway, whatever you got it. It came anyway. And another thing, uh, those plants are dead in front of my house. So I don't really care. I'm, I'm just being honest. But what I, my main purpose for standing here is to ask you what is going to happen to us? The farmers that fed to college people. Dr. Edes came to my grandmother and asked him to, to sell so they could have a place that his teachers, that Allen missed. She did, she sold it to him. She even let them put the lift station up there free. And what do we get? Kicked in the behind as a grandchild. And my great-grandmother was a slave right here on this, this property I got her into her. She was 107 when she died, Alice Anderson, in 1961. And I, and I'm just, I'm just hurt, I'm just disturbed. And she was, she thought she was fighting for her kids and her grandkids. And my grandfather was her first grandchild, you know, so you know who the rest of were, father. And my grandfather was the first black one. So my daddy's dad, Anderson, Zeke Anderson, that came out here in the 40s. So if you all plan to do something with my house or anything like that, I'm not worried about that. Because I know what to do about that. Oh, and by the way, you guys, if you want the number, some numbers that I have, I wrote them down yesterday. The FBI and the Texas Rangers, if we have to come to that, I have the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Item one, consider and take action for approval of the meeting minutes for the regular city council meeting on June 11th, 2018. And it was council's pleasure.
Mr. Mayor.
Council Randall.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes for the June 11th, 2018 city council meeting.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded that the meeting minutes of the Rainbow City Council meeting on June 11th, 2018 be approved. You for the motion, ready for the questions?
Question.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed, have the same right? As have it. Item two, Purview retired teachers and former university personnel. President Andrea Bell Miller, former President Johnny Walker. Ladies, please come forward.
Okay, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Andrea Bell Miller and I am the president for the retired teachers and school personnel of Purview. And we are a local unit. And these are the members of the Retired Teachers Association as well. With me today, I also have Ms. Johnny Walker, who is also a member of our unit for the retired teachers. But in addition to that, she also is the person that was responsible for the volunteers, uh, the volunteer committee in which the retired teachers served and served and helped to provide services to our community members. And Mrs. Walker is also our state district president. So we're very proud to be here today and we thank you all so much. And we would like to present the city with a check. And now I turn it over to Ms. Walker.
Okay, it's not a real check. What we did, we volunteer, and our motto is, if it's to be, it's up to me. As volunteers in our Purview community.
My fellow members.
And the mayor is also part of our retired teachers committee. We are very fortunate that we are able to volunteer in the Purview community. And some of the areas that we volunteer with, the biggest one, we consider meals on wheels. We also volunteer with the exercise program. Many of our members are on boards, they're actively involved in their churches. But the number one thing that we really stress and we appreciate most of all is the fact that we're able to help our neighbors. We help them in any way that we can. So with that said, we did a total of 21,384 hours, we have 60 minutes. We send this information to the state. Because the state looks at the retired teachers as an important component of the voting part of it. If we were to equate that out to money values, it would be $449,064. They, the state uses a base of $25 an hour to come up with this amount. And we're very proud of this. Again, if it has, if it's to be, it's up to me, that's our motto. Thank you. Oh, just a minute. These ladies are very important to us, so I would like for each one of them to enter this session. Marie Herne.
Lois Brown.
Elsie Morgan.
Helen Escloria, a member of St. Francis of Assisi Episcopal Church. And we host the Houston Food Bank. So a lot of us are out there every once a month when it comes and we offer food to the community.
Okay, and this lady here does something very important. She does the shots for the veterinary.
Yeah, I do the rabies clinic, we do it four times a week, a year with Baker Veterinary Clinic. And also, we did a donation of books this year to the middle school in Hempstead. Uh, we didn't donate books, we donated kits for reading improvement. And that was an amount of $500 to assist in purchasing the kits to improve the children's reading.
And Ms. Brown is the president of our local, one of our local alumni chapters.
Purview local alumni chapter.
And this young lady, it's a very busy young lady, she's actively involved in the city.
I'm also president of Purview Economic Development Corporation, 4B.
Okay.
And she's not gonna say this, but she makes the best spaghetti in the city.
I'm Gabrielle and I'm a member of First United Methodist Church and we are known for two things. We have the exercise corner, the exercise class for seniors. You must be 62 and over to come. Anybody less, we don't let you in. We are also responsible for having Boaz Kitchen where we deliver hot prepared meals on every fourth Saturday in the month. And my day would increase it, but that is what we have been doing for the past, what is it now, four years? Four years.
And at the end of the minutes, Christmas Carolina, you come in pretty happy.
Oh, I forgot, that's right.
And she helps coordinate the children's book.
Yes.
And we all know this lady here, Ms. Carter.
I'm one of the former president of the children's. I was the past district volunteer service coordinator. At the present, I am coordinating 160 years of church industry, which is $50. I invite all of you to get big here, to get a table. We be having that big project at the ballroom in Purview.
And when I first met you, about seven years ago, you were going to something Democratic.
I am the president, chairman of the Democratic Club, I just left the Democratic convention.
And Mayor Allen is also a member of our organization. And he's with the protective services and he does a wonderful job with the workshops for that.
And the reason they, they say the retired teachers, it's also former university personnel. I used to be an accountant with the fiscal affairs office in the early days.
And certainly our dear president, Ms. Andrea Bell, who's doing a wonderful job with us.
Again, we thank you all so much and we present this again.
It's not a real check ma'am, you can't cash it.
Well, I tell you what, you couldn't write a check for the work that you and so many wonderful people do in our community. So we certainly thank you and appreciate you.
Thank you.
And we also have a couple of guests with us this evening, but we're not ready for a presentation already. They're confused, downloading, but we've got a guest mayor, I just got to recognize you there. Eugene Graham from Seac Pleasant, Maryland. Uh, please stand and, it's a pleasure to have you visiting with us. Seac Pleasant has started their Smart City program, so much so on their website. IBM has done four commercials for Seac Pleasant and Smart City. So there's a lot going on up there and shortly, we hope to come back and have him share some information on what the Smart City, Smart Health, telemedicine programs are doing up there and some of the other information he has around the country that he can benefit from and assist our residents here. Administration, Ms. Diddy.
Just wanted to kind of briefly talk to Mayor's staff and our staff kind of knows this. We're really having some internet problems here. So if you guys are having trouble getting to us or getting emails to us and we're not getting back to you as quickly as we normally do, that's part of our problem. Uh, we have a meeting set up. Chief has been gracious enough to contact Waller, the city of Waller. And see, they're doing an air fiber program with their libraries and with some of their other community buildings and that, of course, would tie into our smart cities. But that's where they're going for their future just because, and I don't know that everybody's aware, because there is so many lines pointed at the university, they're not pointed at us. So our service is a little slower and we're having to try to figure out different ways to combat that. And so this meeting tomorrow should give us a little better information on where to go. Just to let the public know.
Was it AT&amp;T that we're using to upgrade our building to be built in so long?
Yeah, we currently have AT&amp;T and it's ground fiber. So we're looking to maybe do something different and go satellite, new, some new wave technology. And, um, and we're thinking it'll be a little more economical, but I just wanted to kind of put it out there. So, and if anyone has any other ideas or they're using another internet service at home, if there's anything that you guys have learned from that experience, feel free to come to us and let us know. Because we're struggling through it. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Uh, we have a question, according to speaking. Council John.
Do we have a city newspaper?
Um, the newsletter.
Alright, so we, we use the newsletter as our newspaper?
But from a circulation standpoint, who is it, was it Citizens News, Waller County News?
Yeah, Waller County News is where it posts.
That's the one the county, the city designated several years ago for giving required publications and stuff. But no, we don't have one published in the city. Yes sir.
Uh, my second question, Mayor, on Sandra Blanck Park contamination. Do we have the estimated amount of how much that costs?
Uh, the last number we had, Ms. Herne, was a $30,000 to $40,000 range and...
Right, but they said we basically don't have to do anything.
Okay, but they had...
The last report that I received.
Right, but that gentleman that you all brought in to test it, he had to send it to the state because he certified with the state. So he shared some preliminary information with them, but we have to wait back for the state to come back and say it's like, okay, to do things on the land, because they were the initial ones that told us, because it hadn't been addressed many years ago, that we couldn't do anything until that process was taken care of. So we don't have a timeline, it's up to the state at this point.
I asked, who was the company, which they came up to do it to?
No, I can't recall right now, but I can get, I can email that to you.
Please do, thank you so much.
Uh, Finance, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, I have a report, emptying the last meeting. I would just like to mention one thing if I could here. Uh, I request your prayers. My daughter is critically ill.
She's...
As your first prayer.
And Mr. Johnson's daughter had a child recently and just is still not quite recovered from that. So we'll certainly keep you in prayer, Mr. Johnson. Sorry to hear that. Yes sir.
JJ, are you alright to my, uh, for me to answer some questions? Uh, sorry to hear about that, I keep you in the family, you and your family and my prayers. Do we have any money left over from the fund that the city had received like years back?
Any money from, I think quite here.
Any money left over from the fund that you guys had accumulated?
Oh yeah, right.
Is there money left over?
Well, we have budgeted about $600,000 of it for the new grant down Dan Hughes Parkway. We budgeted about six, we have $800,000 and we budgeted $640,000 for the new grant down Dan Hughes Parkway. So we're gonna have roughly about $230,000 left in there.
Are those somewhat restricted funds, since they were bonds?
Yeah, they can only be used, the bond money is dedicated for sure and water improvement. It can only be used for that.
I had a thought for you. We had a meeting earlier and one of the questions that came out of the meeting earlier today was how much, how much funds do we have available? If we're gonna try to pull money for, to do zoning, comprehensive plan on economic development in the zoning. You know, economic development is 4B. But what budget line item out of our current budget would we look to see what money we had available to do that? So let's say the comprehensive plan was about $20. What line item will we be looking at to pull some money? Because we needed, we needed to do, update our maps and then go through the comprehensive process, which may take some time. But we would wanna be able to find out how much we have available to move this process.
There'll be what's in there under operating supplies under general administration?
So we'll take a look over age?
Uh, what you using here?
How can we talk offline?
I have, I have the budget with me, just a second ma'am.
And one, one thought was too with the crossover, for example, as Council Rowland says, if it's $20,000, we might be able to use 10 now and the next 10 and the new October 1, that cycle, things of that nature as well.
Okay, we budgeted $2,000 and we haven't spent any money this year. That's under operating supplies.
So if, so, so we got $2,000 there, where could we use money if we needed to do, reduce our plant, our planning and zoning, redo our maps, redo the procedures? Is there any other line items of money we could use?
We have to look at that, yes, there are. Are you trying to do it in this fiscal cycle?
Well, we're trying to find out how much is available and then we're trying to see if we can either break it up, doing half to get it started this fiscal cycle and then picking up the second half in October when we get started then.
Okay, I'd have to do an analysis of where we are in our budget as far as different line items. For you, and then I could come back and tell you what we could, what we could find somebody, you know, what we have available.
And the other thing you can do is take a look at the Economic Development Corporation rules and then get with council, because a big part of what we're talking about is projecting and incorporating some of the new businesses that are coming, that are here, that are being built. Because EDC has to be under that new business program. Taking a look at maybe making Business 290 commercial the same way the council did with University Drive from Dollar General to the, to the university entrance. So if we're talking about studies, there may be Economic Development Corporation funds we can tap into based on the business part, because those two main arteries are business related, so we'll just take a look at that.
Do y'all have an idea what type of the fund?
We don't, that's the question, we don't know, we don't know where in the budget. We don't, we, that's the question. We don't know, we don't know where to budget.
No, but I mean, do you know how much money you might need?
We have no idea. We're just, we're trying to figure out. We're at the beginning of the process. We're trying to figure out what we have, what we have right now. Really, it's the money, the money, the financing, depending on how we have the process. So, um, planning and zoning has a meeting on Friday. And I imagine they're going to be examining how much all that's gonna cost.
What y'all wanna do is have your meeting, you can determine an amount that you might need. Once you, and then, once I, I get that amount, I'm, I'll be looking to you. But you determine an amount. Then I can then tell you what we have, or if we have enough available.
Do you have any idea what the last one the city did 9, 10 years ago, comprehensive plan?
That was done about 10 plus years ago. And we had a outside consultant come in and do that. And that brand, if I remember right, about, it was probably about $8,000 to $9,000 somewhere around there.
So around 20, 30?
That's what we paid the consultant.
Yeah, we'll be looking to do some, basically, similar things. But yeah, you can, like you said, just take a look you have in here.
I'll take it.
Please let...
Yeah, we all, you got some, it's a pleasure, but, you know, going slow, but I can look at it.
And again, our prayers are with you and appreciate you. Judge Alexander's in, uh, judge's training, I believe it's in San Antonio. Um, Chief Solomon.
I don't really have anything, but would like to take the opportunity to, uh, just address you guys. Uh, we're, uh, into our emergency management planning. Uh, we're, we're moving along with some stuff and we're moving in a direction. We're gonna start a SRT team. And that's a, that's a, an emergency response team. And what we need, we need you guys. We need you guys. I just listened to your presentation here. And you're the type of people we need to help us to move this thing forward. Uh, without you, we, we can't, we, we can do it, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be what we needed to do and how we need to do it. Because we need our participation from the community. Especially you guys as leaders and volunteers and already doing what you're doing. We will be having a meeting on the 11th, uh, pier. You'll be getting some notices on it. Uh, if you would, come out and, uh, the assistant chief is gonna tell you about, uh, about certain teams. He's gonna tell you how those get started. We're gonna bring someone in to do that training. Uh, I'm, I'm telling you, I've watched this work in other places. And you can't do it without the citizens. If you guys will give us that opportunity to just talk to you about it, uh, on the 11th, uh, we greatly appreciate it. And, uh, this is your community. This is your city. And we want you to be a part of it. So please, uh, come out. We'll get you those notices out.
Chief, president has a hand up.
Excuse me? Yes, I just want to say I have served as a member of SRT in Washington County. And, um, certified as well in the SRT.
Okay, good.
And, um, it is a very important organization to have in your community.
Absolutely.
Because once you have a citizens' response team in place, emergency response team, it, it really does help us be able to stay on top of these, um, you know, disasters and things that do come up. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that SRT will be moving into where you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, sir?
Uh, by the way, uh, I know we've been working on private emergency votes.
Yes.
So I did call the club 100 as well as message that they're, uh, for both.